So, and we have five members. We have quorum. So, welcome to the May 7th, 2024 budget hearing and regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You will call, please.
Ms. Orson?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Keith?
Excused.
Ms. Cook?
Excused.
Mr. Shutter?
Here.
Mr. White?
Excused.
Ms. Dowler?
Here.
Ms. Hewitt?
Here. Thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Open to the public. I do not see anyone in the audience, so I'm going to move on. We have two workshops tonight. We're going to switch the order of them and do the budget hearing first. So, Matt and Ann Marie, do you want to be the floor? What? Oh, okay. Can I have a motion? Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to open the budget here?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kristen, second by Flora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor. Passes five to zero.
All right. Good evening. So, we were kind of joking prior to the start of the meeting that we've been through some of these slides before. We do have some new ones tonight. But I will quickly review this because it is a slightly different format tonight. But we've given this presentation both in the board meetings, in focusing on different things the last two meetings. We've also done virtual public sessions and some around the community. And so, I'm going to talk at first just about some of the foundational beliefs and things we've accomplished with the budget over the last few years. I'll go through that pretty quickly, and then we'll get to the required parts of the budget hearing and then open it up. So, you know, just the things I'm going to go through pretty quickly, you know, because I've been talking about it a lot the last month. But I think they're the really foundational parts of both what we believe as a district and what we've really attempted to improve over the last several budget cycles. Some of the things through our strategic planning efforts has been more professional development, more community engagement events at all levels, really huge growth in our extracurricular clubs and more higher education partnerships. So, our budget supports a four-year graduation rate of 90 percent. That's one of the highest in Dutchess County. Our budget supports a full-day pre-K offerings in each of our elementary schools, including a district pre-K special class integrated setting. We offer, that's the only class of that type offered in a school district building in Dutchess County, and we offer the most full-day pre-K in the county as well. This has been an effort for many of the past years, but our budget supports and continues to support small class sizes. Our budget has supported an exponential increase in clubs, especially at the elementary and middle level. And when I don't include high school in that is because high school typically has already had a wide range of clubs and extracurriculars. So, we've really tried to focus on having more opportunities for students from K to eighth grade. Our budget supports college and advanced coursework. Just a couple of highlights here. We're one of the first districts in the region to offer the AP African-American Studies class, the AP drawing class. One of our students received one of the highest scores in the world on that. We continue to work with DCC. And then the one we'll be adding for next year is a class with Mount St. Mary, an intro to teaching class, which we're excited to offer. High levels of participation in our music. We started fourth-grade instrumental music about five years ago through a grant. We've incorporated that into the budget. I think that and some other things have had a huge impact. And our high school concert band is the largest it's ever been. Our high school chorus also the largest it's ever been. You know, the largest part of our budget is supporting our people through salary and benefits. You know, we have a wide range of employees and employee groups in our district, and our goal is to both support them and to be competitive in keeping them, retaining them, and also attracting employees to the district, too. So, that's a really key part of the budget. And we're doing all of this with our county tax rates being on the lower side. In the county, you can see on that graph there, and they've been going down. And then just briefly, at the last meeting, and we have a really extensive budget website this year where it kind of tells you where to go on YouTube and exactly where to look. The last meeting, we really got into the state part of this. I'll just briefly say we're one of the 300 districts that either we're receiving flat state aid or a slight decrease, and that's due to some changes with what's happening at the Albany level. So, it's important that we've been able to, in this budget, retain all of those things I just highlighted. But I, you know, our budgeting process is year-round, but we're really going to, a lot of it's behind the scenes. In the first part of the year, we're going to be talking more about it in public meetings this summer and this fall because we're expecting more of this from the state. And that will have an impact on Beacon, for sure. So, how we're dealing with this is we are implementing position control. It's something drastic. We are not laying anybody off, but we are looking at positions that when someone retires or leaves, do we need to keep filling that? So, obviously, most we are keeping filled, but there are some that we're making adjustments on. And this is going to be over the course of time. It's not all happening right now. In fact, a lot of it will be happening over the next year. We're looking at our contracts that we have with different vendors and seeing ways to reduce that. And we're also going to more aggressively seek grant opportunities. Our budget total for this year is $83,855,000. That's a budget-to-budget increase of 3.09%.
And this slide shows the revenue piece of the budget, how we pay for everything, what our local property taxes are, which is at the tax cap. So, I'll talk about that a little bit more. Our state aid was flat foundation aid and a little less in expense-driven aids. And then some other miscellaneous aids, some use of reserves and fund balance, and interest income, and pilots. So, during the budget hearing, we are required to show our budget in three pieces: the administrative, the instructional, and the capital. You'll also see this information in the newsletter that will be coming home within the next week. Administrative part of the budget relates to all of the things really behind the scenes: the central office, the principal's office, their clerical, their material and supplies, the benefits, all of that is in the administrative area. Instructional is basically what you would think instructional is. It would be the teachers, the psychologists, the social workers, the transportation department, anything that directly relates to students. And the capital piece is our debt and interest, our debt service amounts. It's also our facilities department. So, that's the three parts of the budget. Our tax levy calculation is a little over $47 million, $47,675. That is at the tax cap. So, we're at 3.91%. So, our budget went up 3.09% budget-to-budget, but our levy increased 3.91%. And a couple of things that affect the calculation for tax cap that are important to Beacon. So, tax-based growth factor, when you're doing the calculation for the tax levy, you are allowed to grow the levy based on this growth factor. For Beacon, we have the highest growth factor in Dutchess County, and the reason for that is the growth, the increase of apartments and houses that are being built here. You're allowed to grow a little bit more than maybe a community that is kind of level and is just maintaining what they have. CPI is Consumer Price Index. You can go up to the Consumer Price Index. The max you can go is 2%. Inflation is over 4, so 2% is the max we can go. Really doesn't help us that much. The capital exclusion, you're allowed to add back the difference between your principal and interest payments and what you receive in building aid. And we'll talk a little more about building aid when we talk about the capital project. And ERS exclusion, ERS is Employees Retirement System, and that's our, one of our pensions for non-certificated staff. If it increases more than 2%, you get a small exclusion for that as well. So, you are allowed to increase the levy. So, overall, that whole calculation, our levy increases 3.91%. So, this is an estimate of what your increase in taxes will be. I will say this is based on last year's assessments. Matt had mentioned before in a prior slide of how our tax rate has been decreasing over the last five to six years, and that's because people are coming on to the tax roll. So, the new house you see or the new apartments you see, when they're completed, they go on the tax roll, and the tax levy remains the same. So, no matter what happens, we're still at $47 million. We can't be more than that. But we spread it out over more people and more taxpayers, so the tax rate will actually go down. So, when I calculate this, I'm using last year's assessments. This is, to me, always like worst-case scenario. So, if your assessments stayed the same, in Beacon-Fishville-Wappingers, your tax increase for the budget would be between $88 and $106 for the year.
So, just things, you know, even though we've been talking about less funds from the state, just to highlight a couple of things, we, and we will be, in the next presentation, be getting into the new pilot reading program, but we are moving forward with some things. We're not adding positions to the district this year, but we are having funds available for professional development for reading, for funds for a new pilot program for grades three, four, and five, and all these enrichment and extracurricular opportunities for kids we're going to keep funding as well.
So, that, so the budget would be Proposition 1 on the ballot. Proposition 2 will be an EV bus proposition. So, just a little explanation. Last year, on the budget, we asked the voters to approve an EV bus, an electric bus, and it passed, and we were really very excited about it. We did, we used a maximum cost of $466,000, and only if we received funding of $250,000 from a grant. So, we're fast-forwarding a year. We found out that the electric buses were more money. Their prices increased, so we don't have the ability, based on the proposition that passed, to actually purchase the bus. So, we are going back to the taxpayers this year on Proposition 2, and we're asking actually for authorization to purchase two EV buses. The really good news about this is we've already been awarded $257,250 per bus by the New York School Bus Incentive Voucher Program. Obviously, that's contingent upon a positive vote from the taxpayers, but compared to last year, we didn't really even know we could get it, and now we've been awarded. We have until a year from July to actually purchase the EV buses. So, we have some time, but we do need the voters to move forward to approve that. So, what you will see is on Proposition 2 would be to amend the language to increase the net cost of the EV bus. So, that would be there. Proposition 3 will be an additional bus proposition. So, the governor's plan is for school districts to completely be electric bus by 2035, and we are required to submit a plan. But in the short term, our facility at the bus garage can support two electric buses. More than that, we would need to do some upgrades. We would need to do some electricity would need to be brought in from, and increase the grid. So, in the meantime, we do have buses that we do need to replace, so we're asking on the proposition to purchase 372-passenger buses. Beacon City School District receives approximately 60% of transportation aid. So, what we normally do is we buy the buses. We finance them over five years. That matches what we get in state aid, so to try to minimize the tax impact of the buses. And Proposition 4 will be our capital project. Our total capital project is $49,950,000. Our building aid ratio is 67%. So, that means we receive 67% back in building aid. There are, there are, we've done some presentations, but there have been a lot of infrastructure upgrades that we are including in this capital project that we could not possibly do in the general fund. It's just too impossible with reductions in state aid and the tax levy to actually do that. So, this is the best way to do it. We receive the building aid on it, and we can get the work done going forward. And just to give you an idea of the estimated tax impact, and again, these are the worst-case scenarios because I use the current assessment. So, the tax increase would be between $184 and $221, depending if you get star. If you get a senior star, regular star, and people who have just bought their houses will get the star reimbursement. So, I just kind of wanted to give everybody a little bit where they might fit in. And this will not be, this will not happen in one year. So, when you do a capital project, you go out and you get the drawings done. You have to be approved by state ed. And then there's, as you know, with our current capital project, there's phases. So, you, the taxes will not increase all at once. It'll be a gradual increase over three to four years, based on how we actually finance the project. So, I do, I don't want people to think that this is automatically, they're going to see it in one year. It's just a progression of how we get to the final.
When is the tax, is the tax levy, when is that recount, the assessment of property values? When is that going to be reevaluated? When do they think they'll be completed?
I understand from people that some letters had gone out to people about their assessments, right? So, everybody's getting letters right now from the city of what their assessments are. In July, from Real Property, we receive the assessments. So, we get them in July, and then we calculate what, we have the same levy, and then we calculate how much it would be, how much the tax rate will be based on that. And then in August, we will present to the board what the actual tax warrant is, and then we'd be able to tell you. But I don't get the assessments till after the budget, so we always, I always look at this as like worst-case scenario.
Right. That makes perfect sense. Thanks.
So, I also have to talk about contingency budget, which I never like to talk about. But so, on May 21st, if for some reason the voters do not approve the budget, we have two choices. We can go back to the, we can make some changes, discuss it with the board, and we can actually go for a second vote in June. If that budget does not pass, then we must go to contingency budget. So, contingency budget only includes expenditures that are, as they quote in state law, "ordinary contingent expenditures." We would not be allowed to increase the tax levy. We would have to use the tax levy from last year. So, that would mean $1.7 million of cuts from the proposed budget we're asking the taxpayers to do. So, that would be pretty significant. And there are things in the contingency budget. No, on equipment purchases. Building use is a huge thing. So, building use, there's a lot of community groups that use our buildings, and if they're a not-for-profit, they don't pay for a fee to use the budget, to use the facilities, but under contingency, they must pay full cost. And so, that would be pretty traumatic for, you know, community groups, city of Beacon, you know. So, we're happy to have these community groups use our buildings, so that would be a tough one. And last but not least, we have an election of three board members. So, we have three seats, we have four people running for three seats. So, we, these are, there are individuals running, and we are planning to have a forum on May 13th, May 13th at 7:30 in this room.
Lovely person sitting right here.
So...
Sorry. We're just laughing because Flora loves to have her face so big.
So glad he's...
We stole, just to be clear, we borrowed those pictures from the Highland Current.
Thank you, Highland Current.
But they borrow pictures from our social media all the time. So, we paid back.
Yeah, he's...
So, just a couple of quick things. You know, we've really, probably more than normal, we've really been spending a lot of time on the budget in board meetings this spring. And we've done the typical budget development, and we've had departments present. We've spent more time talking about this than we probably have in years past. I just want to be clear. I really am a positive person, and I like to keep things positive, and we have worked really hard to make all this work. I do want to reiterate, like, the state, the change in state funding, which, you know, all indications are it will get even worse next year, is significant for us. And so, like, we are making it all work, and we will continue to try to do that, but we are probably going to be spending more time on this sort of conversation earlier in the year than normal, you know, next school year. We'll probably be really starting to get into this in the fall, after the kickoff of the school year, just because, like, we're entering a different phase. And so, not, I'm not an alarmist. Like, we, you know, we believe in having a student-centered budget. We feel like this one is really centered on our students and our young people, and so we're really proud of that. We feel great about it. But this is a significant change, and I want to be clear about that. The capital project, the one thing I just want to add about that is we are really trying to address infrastructure needs. We are not keeping up with our aging buildings in terms of the needs of our buildings. And so, we really are kind of trying to speed up our capital project process a little bit faster than we normally do, but it's needed. Also, with that infrastructure, that's, you know, we get into detail in our past presentations and on the website. We want to add cooling centers to our elementary schools and our middle school. We want to do significant improvements to the theater here at the high school, to the baseball and softball fields here in terms of drainage and dealing with wetness, and do significant improvements to our tennis courts. And we want to also do more secure entries into the schools, into all of our schools as well. So, we're really excited to put the capital project forward as well. And then last but not least, I'm really proud that Ann Marie has headed up this effort in terms of having the grants already lined up for the EV buses, so there's no question, there's no mystery. You know, obviously, it's contingent on voter approval, but like, to have that lined up already is pretty powerful, and I think makes it doable for, not I think, I know it makes it doable for us. So, we're excited to put that forward as well. So, it's a budget that supports our kids. I think it really reflects our beliefs as a district, and, you know, we've been super excited to be talking about it the last month or so. Also, just want to say lastly, support of the board, your advocacy at the state level, I think that's just going to get ratcheted up even higher this upcoming year. But your advocacy and your questions and your feedback has really helped guide us, too. So, thanks to the board, and it's now when we open it up. So, this is not, it's not like a typical board meeting where it just has public comment at the beginning. Part of the budget hearings, we open it up to people who've come. Just if you have any questions, ask us. No pressure either.
It'll be weird if you don't.
You don't have to stand up or anything like that, but if you have any questions, the, once a year, the public hearing for the budget, it runs, it's like a different format than a typical board meeting.
Does anyone have any questions from the public?
Or from our high school?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Any of our board members?
No. I feel like we've really covered this.
We have talked it.
Thank you again.
Sorry.
No, no. I think that it's good because it's new, it's often new information of the first time someone else sees it, but I feel like it's...
But like, the fourth time.
There's been no stone unturned. So, it's a really thorough discussion.
And just here, I do want to say, like, hearing what other districts are having to do or the way they're having to scramble, I do really appreciate this, like, sort of thoughtful, careful way that you guys have thought ahead of time about contingencies and how to, and making sure that the students don't feel the impact, I think, is a really great philosophy to start with, and frankly, not something I've heard people say, except for you guys. So, I really appreciate that. That's it. No question.
I think it's, I think by the time we get to this point, we're all like...
We got it. Let's do this.
We have it in our heads. But yeah, I want to say also, this is a budget I really believe in, and I know you guys have worked really hard in it, on it. I'm disappointed in the process from the state, and we'll definitely be addressing that. But I feel like this is a budget that supports our students, supports our staff, continues with the momentum that we've built over the last seven years since you've come here, and I appreciate all your hard work on it.
Yeah, and I think that knowing that there's going to be a little bit more like this down the road, I'm hoping that we get signals earlier about where the deficits might be so that we have more time to actually really plan. But for being under a lot of pressure and also, like, especially here because we have built so much, to have to start to think about scaling anything down, it was really hard, required so much strategic thinking. So, thank you so much.
Just for the public, too, Matt mentioned our website. So, there's a lot of detail on the website. There is a budget book that has all the requirements of what needs to be presented to the public, and it's by Budget Code. So, if anyone wants to get on our website and see that, and our newsletter will go up there as well as being mailed. It should be mailed out within the next day or so.
And we also get a lot of email questions, and so we just try to obviously answer those as quickly as we can. And yeah, the, you know, our in-person events weren't recorded, but we did, the webinar we did, in which we did answer questions from people on the webinar, that is posted as well. So...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I have a motion to close the budget hearing portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Flora, second.
Second.
Hi, Eric. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor. Passes five to zero. So, our next workshop is from Sagrario Rudasindo O'Neil, and she's going to present reading pilot that we're doing.
All right. Good evening, everyone. All right. So, what I'm going to do tonight is I want to talk a little bit about the reading pilot program that we're going to be launching next year. We're going to talk about the process and how we selected the particular program, and also kind of touch upon what we're currently doing and why there was the need to kind of look at something particularly for our upper grades. So, I did want to kind of start with some key terms, and the reason that I wanted to introduce these terms, just because I wanted to give us common language. Because as we're going into really making sure that we're aligned to the science of reading, so New York State, as we saw in the newspaper, I believe yesterday, on January 1st, State Education Department is going to be sending out guidelines in 2025, January 1st, on how our reading curriculum is supposed to be aligned to the science of reading. So, while they will not recommend curriculums, they don't do that. That is the responsibility of the LEAs. They are going to give guidelines as to what has to be in the programs. So, because I am currently sitting on one of those committees up at the state on the reading initiative, one of the reasons why we selected some of the programs is because it is kind of aligned to what I know is going to be coming out on January 1st. So, in anticipation of that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to be in a position where we have to change everything that we're doing because of the guidelines that are going, that are coming out. So, looking at these key terms, kind of giving us common language because I think some of the terms sometimes use interchangeably, and they're not interchangeable. So, I wanted just to kind of explain a little bit, just because I know that not everyone has a background in reading. So, when we talk about phonemes, so phonemes are basically, when you hear that in terms of literacy instruction, that's basically sounds, you know. So, it's basically the smallest part of a sound. So, for example, and I give an example in the word hat, so H, that's a phoneme. And then we talk about then phonological awareness, which is kind of this huge umbrella that I'm going to talk about as well. So, that's the ability to perceive and manipulate sounds. So, being able to hear the sounds, being able to see the sounds, being able to then manipulate them and put them together. And then we talk about phonemic awareness, which is under that umbrella, a phonological awareness. That's, again, is recognizing which words, a set of words begin with the same sound. So, for example, if I have these different words that begin with the letter B, if I have phonemic awareness, I know that bell, bike, and boy all begin with the letter B, and I also know that the letter B is P. Okay? And then within that is also isolating the first and the last sound, so not just the beginning, but also knowing the end. So, again, an example in the word dog. So, if I have phonemic awareness, I know that the beginning sound is D, that the last sound is G. So, when I see the word dog, I'm able to manipulate that. And then combining and blending separate sounds as well. So, putting words together, it's like M, F, that gives me a map, breaking them apart. So, if I needed to break it apart, I'm able to do that as well. So, this is kind of the phonological awareness umbrella. So, it has these four different levels, and I talked a little bit about the phonemic awareness level. But the word level is, again, that rhyming. So, students being able to recognize the rhyming of words like cat, bat, and hat. There's also an activity that we're able to do called chaining that goes under these word levels, the alliteration, understanding syllables, so where words are broken apart, so knowing... So knowing when a word is a one-syllable word, a two-syllable word, a three-syllable word, and being able to actually break it apart and put it back together. And then onset rhyme level, which is again, being able to know that M, that M, and then at the end map that that's a word together. And then phonics, so is actually basically the action of doing all of this. So in phonics instruction, the teacher, the instructor is actually taking all these different ideas that are represented and teaching them in a way that students are able to then manipulate and put words together and start lifting words off a page. And then when we talk about sight words, now students that are in K-12 are using our Wilson Foundations Program, which is an, or in Gillingham-based program. And what that means, it is a multisensory phonics program. So as the students are introduced to all these different concepts, there's a multisensory component to it. So they're tapping sounds out, so that kinesthetic movement, they're skywriting in kindergarten so they understand the formation of the letters. So in foundations, when they come upon sight words, and a sight word is basically a word that doesn't follow the regular rule, is irregular, but they see it a lot. So the word the, the word is, the word am, the word was, the word were. So those are sight words. So they're not taught in the same way that you would teach how to attack a word. In foundations, they're called trick words. So they do it that way so the students understand that they're tricky and that the normal strategies that you would do on a word that you don't know are not going to work on those sight words. And the way that's taught is, is through kinesthetics, so they're basically memorizing those types of words. Okay. So then in terms of the alignment of the science of reading, which we have been talking about through professional development for the past two years, is that a true, a true program that is aligned to the science of reading actually has these six components. So you're going to have within your instruction, your phonological phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, which is being able to read something in a way that it sounds like the way you speak, vocabulary, so of course, coming upon a word and knowing what that word means and figuring out that word in context, comprehension, being able to, to read a passage and get meaning from it. And then of course, that writing piece at the end. So what we also have discussed a lot within our professional development is the formula, the simple formula to reading. So when, in the past, when you're hearing all this stuff, oh, the science of reading is phonics, that is not true. So that's never been true. It's, it's been this myth about these reading words, phonics versus whole language. Actually, the science of reading is basically how the brain learns how to read. Because as I mentioned before, reading for humans has only been a necessity in the past 120 years. It's not something that is innate. So that is a myth that we're born to read, that is not true. We're born to speak. So that is something that we innately learn how to do. We learn sounds, we speak, and we communicate. But reading, if you think about in the past, you know, education used to be just for the elite. It was not for everyone. And then again, as society has changed, through the Industrial Revolution, education became compulsory because people in order to work and go into the field needed to learn how to read. So it's not something that we as a mankind, humankind, have been doing since the beginning of time. So therefore, there's a whole science behind it and how the brain learns how to read. And in the past, there was this whole myth that, about kids who can decode, so able to figure out words, and we would hear them sometimes saying these words, but they couldn't tell you what they read. So if it could be the story about the three little pigs and they could read it perfectly, who's the story about? A horse? You know, they couldn't really, they couldn't give you literal comprehension or inferential comprehension. And then you had the flip side, where students who really struggled, who didn't have the strategies to lift those words off the page, but when you read a story to them, they could engage in that conversation. They could tell you what the story is about. They can predict, they can compare and contrast, they can follow the sequence of the story. But that also is not reading. And in this formula, the reason there's a multiplication sign is because anything multiplied by zero is zero. So you need to have both of them in order for that to be considered a reader. You have to be able to have word recognition, and you have to have language comprehension, both in order to be considered a reader, which is why we have the multiplication sign. The other thing that we have been working on, and again, in alignment with the science of reading, that true reading instruction actually doesn't just have phonics or whole language, it has all of it. So this is actually the scars-bore rope. And if you look, there are these two threads that are part of the rope, and the bottom one is that word recognition, where we had talked about, that decoding, right? That phonological awareness, so being able to, to know the phonemes, the syllables, decoding, being able to put words together, under, being able to identify sight words, which is very important. But then that language comprehension part is equally important, and also must be taught within, every day within a reading unit. And that is background knowledge. So know, so asking students what they know about a story that's going to be introduced. Vocabulary is very important. And vocabulary is very different from spelling. So vocabulary is where you have that rigor. So for example, if you're reading a story that's based, that's, let's say about frogs, there's going to be very specific vocabularies. They're going to learn about reptiles, amphibians, they're going to learn very, very, what's called academic language. And that's vocabulary that has to be taught. Students are not, not just going to know it, it has to be taught because it's specific to a particular thing. Language structure, syntax, sentences, verbal reasoning, so understanding how to understand a metaphor in a story, inferencing, how to literary knowledge, knowing if something's fiction, nonfiction, realistic fiction, a biography or autobiography. So, and the things between these two threads is that the word recognition are actually skills that kind of have a beginning and an end for the most part. So for example, there are only 26 letters of the alphabet. That's it, no more and no less. So when a student knows 26 letters in the alphabet, they have achieved mastery in knowing those 26 letters. There's only a certain amount of sounds in the English alphabet. There's only a certain amount of vowels. Now, what's different is the language comprehension part, those are the skills that are infinite because you never stop learning them. So there's no such thing as knowing all the vocabulary in the world. There's no such thing as the end of background knowledge, the end of verbal reasoning. That's going to go on forever, which is why you always have to continuously teach that and why that has to begin in kindergarten. I'm just going to stop here for a minute in case there's any questions about some of the terms or, okay. Because I don't want to wait till the end, I want to make sure I get everything.
Can you tell, can you say what the acronym was that you used to say who was responsible for developing curriculum? You had said, you said it's not up to.
Oh, the LEA is the Local Educational Agency.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So currently, so our Beacon Literacy Program is designed this way. So we look at K-2, they do foundations. So within the foundations program, foundations actually is giving our students that whole bottom thread. So they have everything that they need there. It is not a comprehension program, and it's not a full curriculum. It's part of the curriculum because it's doing that word study, our students do it 30 minutes a day, there's end-of-unit tests that they, that they have, there's embedded assessments within foundations. So the teachers are constantly assessing throughout the program and doing progress monitoring. And then there is a readers workshop that the teachers do. So that is your read alouds, that is opportunity to do small groups. That is where students are reading independently. So there's a lot of different literacy centers. Teachers may be doing shared reading, and it may be an article that they're doing together, it may be a poem that they're doing together. They're doing genre studies, so they do, they do things around fiction, around nonfiction, around holidays, and there's writing that's incorporated. The same is true in three to five. So in three to five is called Word Work because we want to say that it's a little bit more sophisticated than what they're doing in K-2. Now, the difference is that our students in three through five do not have a structured program the way foundations is structured. So it relies a lot on the teachers identifying what the students need within these 30, this 30-minute block of work. And then they go into the same structured reading workshop, which is with the read alouds, the strategy groups, independent reading, shared reading, genre studies, and writing. So one of the things that we identified particularly through, and then we have these supplemental resources. So we have Reading A through Z, which is a reading software where students are able to listen to stories, they're able to download stories, we're able to do mini tests on Reading A through Z, so the students can engage with it. iReady has something called a teacher toolbox as well as personalized learning. The personalized learning is something that the students are able to do, and it's adapted to how they perform on their three benchmark assessments. So they do a fall benchmark assessment, which gives us a baseline as to where they're doing in reading as well as math. And iReady actually breaks it down in those components of phonological awareness, phonics, sight words, vocabulary, and then reading, reading comprehension. Based on that, they are, the recommendation from iReady is that if the students, particularly students who need extra support, if they do 45 minutes a week of the lessons on iReady, that that would help them with those areas that they need extra support in.
At all, is that at all grade levels?
That's at all grade levels, like K-3, yeah.
45 minutes total per week?
Yeah, so it's a recommendation. So some students do 30 minutes. I actually track it because I go on every Friday and I check to see how, who's, who's on it, the usage of it. It shouldn't be more than that. If it's more than that, then I do kind of address that because we don't want students on the computer for a long time. It's not, part of the curriculum is a resource. And for what a lot of the teachers are doing, they have centers in their classroom, so that's become like one of the centers. So they'll go on, they'll do a lesson, then they rotate to something else.
That's, so, sorry, that's not the case in middle school, though, right?
In middle school, because they're, they're changing classes and they only have 45 minutes, there was no way that they could do it during class time. So we did kind of give them permission to do it for homework. You know, we are kind of talking about moving forward, how we want to do it next year. Because again, even though it's a recommendation from the company, we're paying for it, we can do what we want. You know, like, so we're able to tailor it however we want to tailor it. You know, I have some ideas about it, so, but we want teacher input to see what they did. And then every classroom has, has libraries as well as leveled readers. And the level readers, just for your information, are readers that are, so we use a Funtis and Penel system. So books are letters A through Z, and the higher in the alphabet, the harder the books are. So if you see a level A book, it's a book that mostly is pictures, very few words. If you see a book that, for example, it's a little R book, it's most likely a chapter book, there's not going to be any pictures in it. So it's a level of complexity. So they're in the classrooms as well, and the reasons that we would use those level readers is to teach comprehension skills with a group of students that are all reading more or less at the same reading level. So this is kind of the example of some, of the data that we used last year to kind of look at our curriculum. So if you notice, again, phonological awareness, we're seeing that our students seem to be doing well, the majority of our students seem to be doing well in phonological awareness and phonics and the high-frequency words. Now, what we discovered was that when we disaggregated the data and kind of looked at the upper grades, so in the upper grades, we know that we have students who had diverse learning opportunities during COVID. They didn't have the full foundations program, some of the students were home. So those are the students that we realized missed some of that fonus instruction that was really key. So we have some students that are still in need of fonus instruction in the upper grades. And we don't really have all the resources that we need in order to really to support the students. Because a lot of the, the needs are very, are varied. So what we've been doing, we have been going, this is where iReady has actually also come in, where we've been able to go onto iReady, and this is actually a sample of what the teachers have access to. So if I have a group of students and I can go right into reading that I know are struggling with, let's say, identifying syllables, now that's a first and second grade skill that would not be available to my third, fourth, and fifth grade students because they're in third, fourth, and fifth grades. But as a teacher, I can actually download that lesson and do that as a direct instruction lesson. So that gives teachers these resources, extra resource to be able, and the lesson's all done for them. They just have to prepare the materials that they need, they pull a small group, and again, it's not done on the computer, this is a direct instruction lesson. So they have all these different lessons that they can use. So if I know that a student is struggling with blends, so blend are two letters that are always together, but they make their independent sound, a lot of our kids are missing those little, those little strategies because of the pandemic. So I can pull this lesson and I can do a small group instruction lesson with them.
When do the teachers have, when, how do they have the time to do that? They, so they, and I, I know I went on this rant a couple meetings ago, but how do they get the time to go through and see that this one needs K-1, this one needs 3.5, you know, if, like, so do they have to actually go in and look at that data sometime during their day and then, then figure out how to, is that?
So one of the things that iReady does when they do the first diagnostic, they actually will group the students.
Okay.
So it tells, so if I tested, let's say you were my class and I test, and I, had you do the diagnostic, I can actually go in, and first of all, I'm going to see how every individual student did. I get a, a classroom bird's eye view of how everyone did. I could then see how every individual student did. And then I can actually go to the section that says groupings, and it'll actually group my students. And then it gives me the list of skills that they need support in. Now, now the thing with that is that if I do that in the fall, so I have the information for the fall, I start doing that, and our, as students are doing better and better and better, it does get tricky to continue to identify where students need support because the next diagnostic is not till January. And then after January, then the last one is in May. So we knew that we needed kind of extra support in that because, keeping in mind that our upper grade teachers, it's not something they're accustomed to doing. You know, normally, if students are going through a rigorous, explicit reading instruction, by third grade, they're not struggling lifting words. The instruction at that point should be on vocabulary, on prefixes, suffixes, root words, Greek words, like those different kinds of things. And that's what our teachers are used to doing. But kind of going back to a blend, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's difficult. So we kind of, listening to the teachers, working with them, that's when we started saying, let's look at our program. So where are the holes in our curriculum that we need to plug in? And do we need to start to look at something that maybe will take the place of what we currently have? And we didn't go into it with saying we're going to change a whole new reading program K-2.5. We didn't want to do that because at, first of all, K-2, because of foundations, because they're already doing centers, they're doing a pretty, they're already, they're used to doing that work. Because it's always been understood that early childhood, that's where you learn how to read. Even though, again, it was a falsehood because reading instruction is actually K-12. It's just that it looks different. Obviously, in an algebra class, I'm teaching literacy in a very different way than I would in an English class, that I would in a kindergarten class, but literacy is still literacy. So we actually started kind of like in February, I was meeting with Nadia Abramson and Leslie Tompkins, who are RTI TOSSAs. We had just done professional development with the teachers in January, we were getting feedback, we were looking at a lot of different things. And we started kind of vetting through a lot of programs, a lot of reading programs, because if we wanted to present something to the teachers, we didn't want to overwhelm them with 20 programs, because that's a lot. So we started kind of going through a lot of the programs and weeding out the ones that we knew were not aligned from the get-go, you know? And there were a lot of them out there that were saying, oh, we support the science of reading, and then you go in there and it's not, it's, some of them were basal programs, so some of them were not something that we knew were aligned. So we were able to actually narrow it down to these three programs. So the K, the CKLA, that's Core Knowledge Language Arts, and that program is actually by Amplify. And one of the reasons we looked at that program is because we currently administer to students something called the DIBELS. And the DIBELS is a different kind of universal assessment that we give students, and it tests basically for word recognition, letter recognition, sound recognition, nonsense words. So because we already have that diagnostic, and this is aligned, this program was aligned to that diagnostic, we figured this might be a good program that we can contact the representatives and have them present to us. We also looked at HMH, which is Hooflamiflin Hardcore, Intereading. That's another program that we, that we contacted because when we went on their website and looked at some of their products, we were able to see that they actually, not only were they aligned mostly to the science of reading, but that they actually do workshops on the science of reading. And I actually attended a workshop just to see, and it was pretty rigorous. And then we looked at Wit and Wisdom. So this is another program that has alignment to the science of reading. Intereading and Wit and Wisdom is also two of the three programs that New York City, if you've been following what's going on in New York City with their literacy curriculum, they actually now, the districts in the city can only choose from. the districts in the city can only choose from three curriculums. And, uh, Intereading and Wit and Wisdom are two of the three that they're allowed to choose. So we did reach out to the companies, we had them, um, kind of pitch to us and send us samples. When the presentations were going on, we invited the principals, the elementary principals to sit in on those presentations because they were very long. Each one was about an hour, hour and a half to kind of go through the whole product. And then what we did was that we asked for samples to be sent to the schools so the teachers can actually look at the samples of the three different programs. So, uh, Intereading sent digital and hard copies. Core Knowledge sent some hard copies to the buildings and Wit and Wisdom sent digital copies. And then after the teachers, um, what we did was when we sent all the samples, we actually looked at all the different programs and then we actually did a program comparison to help the teachers. Because we didn't want them to kind of get the samples and kind of be like, oh, I don't know what I'm supposed to be looking for. So we actually did this for them as a guide. So when we look at the three programs, one of the things that we looked for, was it aligned to, was the, uh, the science of reading word study in alignment in K two? Was it in alignment in three, five? Was there a foundations alignment? So if this program is successful and we want to also expand it to K, to K two, that where we have a K five cohesion, we want to continue to do foundations because we're finding success with foundations. So we want to make sure that any program we looked at actually had a foundations alignment to it. Was the comprehension aligned to the science of reading and was there a writing component? We looked at, was there opportunities for independent reading? We want our students to be able to continue that love of reading, to be able to read independently and choose their books. We were looking for, was there embedded progress monitoring within the programs, were there end of unit assessments included? Particularly because we are looking to use end of unit assessments for report card grading. So there's cohesion across the three, uh, across the four buildings. And the report cards are based on a common assessment across the district as opposed to teacher made assessments. Did the program have intervention support? So we wanted to make sure that even if students were not part of our academic intervention support program, that they were still getting intervention within the classroom, because we've been working on that for the past two years. And was there already embedded support for our E N L students? Because even though we don't have a large number of E N L students, we have E N L students and we don't want them to fall through the cracks. We looked at whether they were, um, any kind of digital slides or something to support the teachers, things that were already made, because again, teachers' time is precious. Were there differentiated activities for our students with disabilities? An online component for students. So if parents wanted something at home to work on with their students, would they have access to it? A digital resource for the teachers. And then, of course, it was very important that whatever program was selected was culturally responsive. So the rubric that we use, we went on the Reading League. And the Reading League has a very rigorous rubric that the state is going to be using as well, to look at the programs, to see the alignment, and we actually checked it off. And then in terms of cultural responsiveness, we used the NYU Culturally Responsive Scorecard to see where they fell in terms of their score. And then, of course, was there the number of modules that would, would be taught? And the professional development support, because teachers would need to have professional development on how to implement the program. So we had forty three teachers respond to the vote. So they had about three weeks to look at the materials, do the comparison, do the voting. And ninety percent of the teachers chose, so here. These were, we made the, the survey very easy for them, because again, they don't have a lot of time. So we asked them three questions. And then they voted. And then the winner was Intereading by Hooflamiflin. So the structure of the program, so this is an example of a fourth grade teacher's guide. So when the teachers were open it up, they actually get a glance of the entire year. So there are, in third through five, there are twelve modules, each, all the modules are about three weeks each. A, a lot of the modules are, um, are science and social studies based modules. However, they are not aligned to our social studies and science standards in terms of that fourth grade may be doing a unit on plants and that's really something that second grade does. So it's not that grade level alignment, but it is aligned to our standards. It's just not that grade level standard, if that makes sense. So a lot of them are.
Overall standard or?
If, if they're aligned to the literacy standards.
Right.
But when they're doing.
Not the, not the science, next gen science.
So you'll see, for example, um, this particular unit is inventors at work. So this is a, a science alliance unit. So at the end, the students actually do an inquiry research project where they have to create their own invention. The performance task is actually a narrative, a personal narrative that they have to do. And in this particular unit, you'll see that it, there's always an essential question that the teachers have to focus on. So this is what kind of circumstances push people to create new inventions. So that's kind of like the theme of the three weeks. Students will be getting, uh, a type of workbook that's called My Book. And the workbook is not like your typical workbook where it's just, uh, practice activities. The workbook actually has the passages of the stories that they're going to be reading. And the reason that the passages are in there is because the students will learn how to highlight, how to take notes on the margin, how to be able to actually interact with text. And it's a, it's a consumable, so they get to keep it. Unlike a basal, which we don't want, because a basal, you can't do that. Basil, you know, they have to, you have to reuse it every single year. So this is kind of like a workbook that gives, gives them that interaction with the text, um, as well as doing some practice activities. So it's, so the, so the literacy block, the structured literacy block, their recommendation is either ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes, depending on, um, the school schedule. So here in Beacon, we do do a two blocks, a two hour block. So we're probably going to be doing the hundred and twenty minutes. This foundational skill in communication, I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on. Let me just go back.
And this is just three, three, three through five?
Three through five. Yeah. The reason, um, we're launching it, uh, in three through five is because that's where we found there are needs, students that kind of did not get all those foundational skills that we would have liked them to have. So we actually have fifth graders who are still struggling, you know, with those words that really they shouldn't be struggling with. So we want to make sure that we're supporting them.
And does that feel, I mean, I know, you know, we've talked a lot about the pandemic and, and how that's leaving these gaps for kids. Do you feel like in a few years, when that cohort has passed through, how will this program be essential still? You know, how, how would it kind of move with the kids' needs?
I, I actually feel it still will be essential because it's actually teaching the way we're supposed to be teaching reading. So that was one of the things, when we were looking at all the different programs, some of the programs that were disregarded was the fact that they stop word work in second grade. And that is not, that is not how you teach reading. You have to continually teach reading. And one of the things that actually the teachers complained about was, you know, that they really wanted to be able to teach those, you know, like suffixes and prefixes in a structured way. You know, like, because it was always the question like, when do I introduce this? When do I introduce that? You know, and sometimes we don't know, right? So at least with this program, it gives it to us. It gives us that structure that continues with that, what foundation started. So it doesn't end for them. Being able to break apart those, uh, multi, multi-sabbatic words, being able to understand that when I see the pre in front of a word, that means, you know, before, you know, like being able, that way when they're reading, particularly as the text gets more complex, they have those attack skills. And they don't lose those attack skills. The other thing is, we want to make sure that our students are exposed to really rigorous vocabulary. And we want to make sure that the stories are also engaging. We want to make sure the stories represent our students. So one of the things is that H and H has, has been able, they actually, one of their, their collaborators is someone that is an expert in cultural responsiveness. So a lot of the texts that has been selected as mentor texts are representative of different, a wide range of students and families, so our students are able to kind of see themselves.
And is the idea that if the pilot feels successful, that it would be, it would be stretched down to K through two as well? And how would that work with the foundations?
So with foundations, this particular program is aligned to foundations. So they wouldn't do the word work, they would do everything else. They would just, they would do foundations and then they would do, uh, the ninety minute portion of the structured literacy. As opposed to doing the one twenty, because we have something already for word work.
And is this all teacher taught or is there pro, is there a computer time?
It's all teacher taught, okay? There, there are options for kids to do some independent work if they wanted to. Right now, that's not an option the teachers will have to give to students. So what we ended up purchasing for the teachers, um, the program has a lot of bells and whistles. And we want the teachers to really first learn how to do the program well, as opposed to throwing all the bells and whistles. And then they're trying to figure out all these different components of the program. They have access to a lot of the bells and whistles in a digital form. We just did not purchase it in a paper form. So because they don't have to use it. So we want them to really focus on doing that direct instruction of teaching, uh, the different vocabulary, the different word work, teaching the comprehension strategies, and particularly the writing. So one of the exciting things about the program is that there's a lot of focus on writing. And that's an area that I think across the board, across the state, our students need support in, you know, so. Again, they're, they're going to be introduced to academic language, which is very different than, than different kind of, of vocabulary, which is, um, so the way it breaks it up, so it goes into the generative vocabulary and the vocabulary strategies, right? And then it actually goes to that very specific academic vocabulary. Where they have to kind of discuss the words and there's a guided practice and an independent practice. This decoding and fluency part, so this is a foundational skills. And this portion of the lesson can be done in small groups or it could be done at a different time during the day. And this is really supposed to be for students who need it. So if there are students who are decoding and they don't need that extra support, we're not going to put them through this. It doesn't make sense. So they're going to be doing something different, they'll be doing something at their level. That's why they're going to be focused on that academic vocabulary where everyone is going to be exposed to that. Because again, we want to keep the expectations high for all students and make sure that they're being exposed to high level vocabulary. But then when it comes to this decoding and fluency that they're still struggling with, that's going to be done specifically just for them. And that's why it's kind of like in purple. And it could also be done in a separate, kind of like a separate ten to fifteen minute block. And then the text sets and text complexity, so we have, like I mentioned, we have a lot of library, we have full libraries in our classroom. So our kids are going to be working indepe, are going to be reading independently. And they're going to be using the books that we have in our classroom. But there's going to be skills attached to them that they're going to be able to apply to their independent reading. And then there's the reading comprehension and strategies, they're going to be explicitly taught to our students through the program. The independent reading time, which again is self selective reading with a purpose. There's opportunities for shared reading as well. Listening comprehension, so the teacher does do read alouds. Because again, the nice, the important thing about a read aloud is that again, students who are struggling to read at their grade level have to be exposed to rigorous vocabulary through those read alouds. Because if not, the books that they can access don't, doesn't have that vocabulary that they need. And we don't want them stunted in the, in, in that, because then they don't develop and that's keeping low expectations for them. And then the small group instruction. So the small group instruction, one of the things the program has, it has already made lessons, kind of like I ready for the teachers. But again, it's very specific and explicit to, um, to the skills of the student and to the goal of that particular module. So the teachers don't have to try to figure it out, it's going to give it to them. And then, of course, as they see that the student may need more or need modification, then they still have the freedom to kind of do those modifications along the way. But it kind of gives them a structure onto how to do it. And then there is, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, is I ready phased out slowly? Is that replaced or that is always the testing?
The.
But is I ready to be phased out?
Well, I ready, we're going to continue because it's one of our diagnostics. And I ready is really the only diagnostic that we have K eight. That's consistent. So we're able to kind of see students throughout time. We don't have any other assessment that is K eight. And then, again, there's a spelling component, but that's, again, is a foundational skill. So that's not something that would be given to all students, it would be given to the students who need that extra support. Because they don't, you know, we don't believe in spelling tests, because spelling test research shows doesn't work. You know, the kids actually memorize, they're not really learning how to spell. So this is about teaching students how to spell in a way that's organic, where they actually know how to spell the word as opposed to memorizing the word. And then this is the writing, um, component of it. So at the end of every module, there is a writing piece that goes along with it, that they have to produce at the end. And there's also rubrics. So again, so as the teachers are actually grading the writing, there's a consistent rubric that everyone is using. So that way, it calls, it, it gives us an opportunity for cohesion in terms of grading. So I know it quickly through the program, but.
This is, there's a lot of detail here, I think it'll take a little time to unpack.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot, yeah.
I guess, but for, for my understanding, and I'm so sorry if you explained all of this already, I believe this is in response to what you know and what we've been told will be the focus on reading that will be coming from the state. And that they're providing these new guidelines in January. You have this sort of insider view, this process was followed to, to identify the program that we could use. I guess my question is, just from like a school board level, we're piloting, we've chosen this to pilot to meet these guidelines. Have you heard in your like, kind of insider, uh, experience where the funding will come? So we're piloting this, but you know, now we're going to, we're looking at like, we have these different programs we're talking about. I, I don't know that, they're not giving funding for professional development, I know that. So are they going to fund any schools that like to continue to integrate programs like this?
So I don't know yet. One of the things that the people on the committee are being very vocal about is funding. So every recommendation as we meet, we're always saying, yes, we need this and we need money. So we keep saying, and we need money.
Right.
And we need money. The, the one thing is that Governor Holc is really committed to that, I think she's hanging her hat really on this. I know there's a twenty million dollars that's being dedicated to support the science of reading that has been given to NICEET so that they can do professional development. We're asking that some of that money come to the school districts directly.
Yeah.
You know, because we could kind of do that here. We could use that money, there's a lot of really great training that we can send teachers to. But we need money to do that, not just because of the extra work the teachers will have to do on their own, but also coverage of substitute teachers, because that's expensive as well. Getting more materials, doing work after school, you know, so. So we're hoping that next year, I know that they're redoing the formula for, for foundational aid, but we're hoping that there is funding for the implementation. Because again, if the expectation is that on January first, twenty twenty five, these guidelines are going to come out and they were required to do it, like these new standards, then we need money for it, because then it's another unfunded mandate. And granted, we'll use textbook money, so instead of using textbook money for something else, we'll use it for this. So textbook money, we always have.
So it's sort of a wash in the budget?
It, it kind of is right now, yeah.
And then, do you have any insight as to why she's hanging your hat on reading?
I, well, I think, and I want to speculate by, um, and, and this is a good thing. What the pandemic did was it really opened everyone's eyes to how much our students were struggling. And a great, one of the things that I would love to be able to do here is see if we can actually sponsor a night and have everyone watch, um, The Right to Read. Because that's a really great documentary, it's not long. But The Right to Read really has become a, a grassroots effort to ensure that all fifty states are actually teaching kids how to read. And not based on just because it's the right thing to do, but that it's a civil right. Because as we know, if you cannot read, you cannot function in our society. It's actually dangerous to not know how to read. And I know I get very passionate about it because as someone who is not a native speaker of English and the importance of being able to, to know how to navigate reading medication, be able to go into a supermarket and know how to identify tuna fish versus cat food. Like, like, it, it sounds silly, but it's very scary when you don't, when you can't read and, and then you're shut out from all these other things that you're able to do in society. So I think because there's this effort and it's being very, people being very vocal about it, I think she feels that this is the cause that she should hang her hat on. That it's, this is actually a cause that you can't lose. Like, who's going to be angry that a governor wants everyone to read? You know, that's. You know, that's my...
Yeah, the literacy, the illiteracy rate among prisoners is extremely high.
Yeah. And she actually, her, so she actually has a deputy that's a liaison to the New York State Education Department, who is actually sitting on this committee. And she speaks for, for the governor, and it's very, very clear that the governor, even in terms of the language, she wants science of reading to be used and not anything else. They don't care if it's being politicized, that's the terminology that, that needs to be used, and that's what they want us to use. And that's what the state is using to respect her wishes in that, in that sense. And, and personally, I'm in agreement with it. I'm like, how can you be, again, there's a whole history, again, listen to the podcast, tell the story.
Yeah.
This is something, it's been, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
It's been a long time coming.
And I mean, I live this between like...
It's just that we do need funding.
Different styles of teacher, teaching and, you know, whole language and...
Yeah.
I don't think, I think my kid would burn sight words if she could...
The great thing is that part of the initiative as well is working with higher education, working with their school of education. So, re-looking, looking at and changing the curriculum of the teacher preparation programs, so that all teachers, when they exit, regardless of their license area, actually know how to teach reading.
Yeah.
So, that's actually the goal.
Right.
You know, so they're doing that part of it as well. But again, it all requires money.
Unless you have that common language, like you can have one teacher one year and make a lot of progress, and then somebody has a different approach, and it's not really built on it in a scientific way.
Right.
It can cause a lot of deficits.
Saggy, when we talk about pilot, are we looking then next year, starting with a certain number of teachers in each grade, three, four, like how does...
We're actually doing all three, four, and five.
All, all three, four, five teachers next year?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I know, it's an ambitious project, it's going to be exciting.
It's an ambitious pilot, okay, good.
Yes, it's going to be exciting.
That's fine. So, they'll all be start, starting in next year? Okay, great.
We're, we're working out what professional development's going to look like.
Good.
Because we have a whole calendar. The other thing is that the teachers are going to actually have access to support all throughout the year. So, there is someone who is going to be assigned to our district that the teachers can actually do conference calls with, like virtual meetings with.
I was going to ask who's...
Yeah, so, they don't have to wait for the professional development day, they can, like, if I'm in a classroom and I'm like, you know, I'm unsure how to use this resource, they can literally send a message to the person, and they can talk to that person, and they can walk them through everything. And they're going to have access to that, starting in the summer, you know, once we put in the purchase order, yeah. So, that, that, that's a unique support that I thought that was, that was fantastic, yeah.
Great.
Cool. You, you kind of alluded to this, and I'm, I'm not expecting you to necessarily answer now, but it sounds like, you know, I'm, having been on the board as long as I have, I'm happy to see that there are these assessments, I feel like teachers are using them really well. We even had an example given by the principal of Glenham of a student, like seeing their progress through these assessments, and that's, and, and feeling so proud and feeling motivated to keep working. However, you said, and I think that it, you know, there is that possibility that, that iReady wants this to be used as much as possible, because that helps iReady, and we want to make sure that we're using this tool and this tool isn't using us. And, you know, parents, some parents have complained about it, some students have written the board. I think some of that is misunderstanding and not understanding how important assessments are, but I do want to be able to tell them, you know, with confidence that we have really looked at that and are kind of putting kids in front of screens at a minimum, and, and this is a teacher tool, and that, you know, something that we're, we're using really with the students in mind.
Right, right. And, and we are doing that, we're being thoughtful and purposeful. And I know the teachers are not abusing it, they wouldn't do that. And I actually have been monitoring. So, iReady is not something that I am new to, so we had it in my previous district, and that's what I used to do as well. I used to get on my computer every Friday, and I used to check it, just because, again, we don't want students on there for too long, because if they are, it makes me wonder, like, why? Because that's not necessary. And if there are, and actually, it's, it's not, to me anyway, and I've been very clear in my message, if they don't get to that 45 minutes, that's not a big deal either. You know, so it's not like anything bad is going to happen. Most of our students are actually averaging about 30 minutes. So, we actually don't have a lot of students that are doing the 45 minutes. The biggest average really, in, in, when I look at the, the chart, is really 30 minutes, which is fine. You know, and if there's a, a student, for whatever reason, that can't, just like with anything, we always, we always want to make sure that our students are comfortable, that can't go on the computer for whatever reason, then they don't go on the computer. So, it's not, it's not part of a grade, you know, it's not, you know, or anything like that, so, again, it's a recommendation, so.
I have one more question for you.
Yeah.
Just in terms of, you know, Kristen was talking about her daughter's experience, like students with learning differences, do you feel like this addresses just the, the full range of the way students learn as individuals and...
Yeah, I, I, I believe it. The work, the, when I was going through the materials, because I'm always looking with my keen eye on how are we supporting ENLs and how are we supporting students with disabilities? And there's a lot of differentiation in the program and a lot of resources that have been differentiated. So, that's kind of what I was looking for, because sometimes you'll look at programs, and they'll give suggestions for differentiation, but there's no resource to go along with it. So, then it falls on the teacher to kind of figure it out. So, they actually provide those resources. So, it's resource-rich, and actually, what's going to take the teachers some time is actually sitting down and going through kind of everything and becoming, and familiarizing themselves with it and becoming comfortable. It's kind of the same thing with foundations. If you look at all the components of foundations, there's a dry erase board, there's a magnetic board, there's, there's cars, there's a lot of stuff that kind of goes along with it. But you're not using it every day, every single piece every day, and it's getting used to it. And once the teacher's got accustomed to it, now it's like, not a big deal. So, I think in the beginning, that learning curve about how do I manage all my, all the different materials that I have, where do I put everything, where do I store everything, how do I use it appropriately? And that's what PD is for.
And are they learning this over the summer, or when?
We're working out, figuring out how, whether we, we have an option of doing it before the year ends, or doing it the first day of school, possibly in the summer. So, we're still kind of working that stuff out, because we also want to make sure that we're getting as many teachers as possible. My only concern with the summer, that if not everyone's available, then it's, then you have a chunk of people who didn't get the training, and now we have to figure out time to give them the train, not that they can't have, but we could figure it out.
Well, one question I do have about something like this is, it looks like something that even if you had a day of training, you'd want to spend some time with. Will they have an access to the platform and be able to look at?
Yeah, so what, so, once we, we put in the PO, they automatically will get digital access.
Okay.
So, even if they don't, they don't have like the boxes, they'll immediately have access, so they could spend all summer going through everything.
Okay.
And that includes the, the rep that can help.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the pull-out, like the thing, just, I don't know, this, I'm sorry, don't kill me, everybody.
No, 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 ask please.
No, I'm talking to my phone.
Oh, okay.
I get that you can talk about this all day, that's fine, like, that's exciting, but I think we're, we've hit a fatigue point, so I don't want to like, drag everyone down with me. But one, just to kind of like a flag, as like a parent of a kid with a learning difference, is this like those, those pull-out lessons? I always feel like that's, that's tricky for kids in the class, because when you are, I know that there's differentiation, but it's like, in a, in a gen ed setting or something, when you're kind of pulled out and given something separate, and it, it's clearly not...
Well, everyone's supposed to be in small groups.
Okay.
So, it shouldn't look different, because what's supposed to happen within the reading block is that you're pulling small groups. What, what you're working on is going to be very specific to that group of students, but you still have to pull groups, whether the kids are reading at grade level or not.
Okay.
Because the kids that are reading at grade level still need specific skills as well. So, groups are happening all the time. So, it's not that only the kids who need extra support. The difference would be that if I need extra support, I may be pulled more often, but everyone is getting pulled in a small group, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so they're not being pulled out of the room.
No, no.
They're just like gathering at like a reading table at various times, right?
Right.
So, it's just...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
As the kids are working, going from different centers.
Right.
It could be that the kids are all working on an independent activity, and then they're, they're pulling small groups.
Yeah, I think that, that, it just, I know that it's, I'm not trying to get too far in the weeds, but I do know like some of the worst experiences were around like being part of that group, that even if it's in the class, it's like that you're the, you're the kind of struggling group that always gets pulled together, and then the other kids get more privileges, and they get to do the more fun thing. So, I'm just like, you know, when I see something this, like, separated out, I, I think kids can kind of, they sort of develop an awareness about where they fit and rank, and if it's a little bit more seamless, I think that would be nice, but whatever, there's, for another day.
Well, not to drag it too much longer, but just to be clear, so the iReady will still be the assessment tool?
Yes.
And the way that this works, there will always need to be, this doesn't have any assessment tool built in, we will always need something separate for the assessments.
So, there's end-of-unit assessments.
Okay.
So, that is assessing what was taught within those three weeks.
Right.
So, iReady is a diagnostic, so it, it's testing something a little bit different. So, when the students sit in front of iReady, they're sometimes introduced to concepts that they haven't been taught yet.
Okay.
So, so that's why, why we do both.
Okay. But you're still getting a snapshot of how they're learning.
Yeah, because we want to have multiple data points on a student, so.
I'm just going to belabor a little bit longer. Sorry. Now, we talked about K five, we, sixth grade has the block, right, in reading in ELA. Is it a, a thought that eventually that something could be implemented into sixth grade, that, I, I don't know if this has a middle school component?
It does, it actually does.
Okay.
And I like, so, I, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But it actually has a really good middle school component, so...
So, is there a way to continue it into the, which is great, that's awesome.
Yeah, so...
It's really good.
And, and it would be nice to eventually have a K eight, but, you know, so, no, but they, they, I have to admit, they, they, they did a pretty good job, and I'm pretty picky, you know? And, and not that there's, I will say this, there's no such thing as a program that has everything, that doesn't exist. So, we're always going to have to supplement, we're always going to have to adapt and make adjustments, because it just doesn't exist, because our children are, are beautiful geniuses who are diverse. So, we're always going to have to, you know, mix it up for them. But at least this gives us the, the majority of what we need. And I feel very comfortable in working with the teachers and implementing this for the next year.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
Hi.
How are you? Do you have any comments you want to share with the board?
No, not really.
Any, any thoughts on the reading pilot, or?
I like it, I think everything was covered really well. I don't know, seems like a good idea.
Yeah.
She, she told me she really enjoyed hearing the budget presentation three times.
You want a third time, it really hit for you.
Hit it on video.
I missed the last time, so this time really like...
Oh, there, oh, there you go.
You were.
Need you out there evangelizing. Tell them all about the tax cap.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
I mean, some of our students can vote.
I was just going to say, there's some 18-year-olds that, you know, seniors, so pass, pass the word around that...
Just walk down to the, well, some of them.
Yeah, easy commute to the voting booth.
Amazing graphics, by the way, on all of these presentations tonight, I feel like we didn't talk enough about it.
Canva winners.
Canva, yeah, that was, it looks really good. I like the bouncing cash. Bring that up earlier, but I was like, oh, animated cash, that's new here.
All right, I'm going to move on, because we're, we're going long. Review, reviewing the agenda, there are no notes or corrections. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to receive counsel from our legal counsel?
So moved.
Second. Flora, second by Kristen, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm also in favor. And we'll be back in about 45 minutes. Superintendent's report.
I'll be super brief, just a, a couple of reminders, the spring concerts kick off Thursday of this week with Rambout, and then the schedule follows over the next couple of weeks, and the Foundation for Beacon Schools has their Film Fest Friday and Saturday night here at the theater and the high school. And you can get tickets for that on their website.
Thank you. Board comments, Semra.
Just thanks for the great presentation, Saggy, that was super helpful. That's all I'm going to say, thanks.
Kristen?
Yes, thanks for the presentation about the reading, thanks for all the work that's gone into the budget, and let's hope we have a wonderful end to the school year.
Thank you. Eric?
No comment.
Flora?
So, I just wanted to let everybody know, in case you didn't see the email, that DCSBA will have, be having its annual meeting on June 6th at 6:00 PM at Mill House Brewing Company in Poughkeepsie, it is free, and all board members and superintendents in the county are welcome. It's June 6th at 6:00, and they will be honoring board clerks, and will be having a brief presentation on their responsibilities and roles. I'm pretty sure you've been, you should have been invited.
Yeah, Alina Maslow, I think, from the Duchess Clerks' Press Back World.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm actually looking forward to it, I think it'll be really interesting and educational. You know, DCSBA is always a good time, guys, I hope you go. We had, we had a cybersecurity presentation at our last meeting, and they mentioned one thing, and this is probably so obvious, but I just wanted to say, we have that AI policy, and they had recommended that, you know, that we work closely with our IT department on that, and I'm assuming that we, we are, and we do, and we will, but I just wanted to throw that out there just in case. They also brought up some interesting free forensic tools that educators and administrators can use to see what's, what's being tampered with, you know, in terms of deep fakes and stuff. It was an interesting presentation, and once it's shared with us, I will forward it to everyone. We, we, you know, we also had some talks about what we're going to be doing over the summer. We want to, I think the main thing we want to do is start working with NISBA to learn a little more about our legislators, a little more about what their, you know, what their sort of pet policies and, and pet issues are, and start trying to tailor our conversations with them a little more toward sort of meeting them where they're at. And our goal is to, by the time budget season comes around, they're already armed with